Good evening, everyone. It is now seven oh one P M. I will call the Tuesday, July eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three Board of Selectmen to order. All three selectmen are present, and we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, my nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I make a motion that we approve the Board of Selectmen's special, wasn't a special meeting, a regular meeting minutes from July fifth, two thousand and twenty-three. Second, okay, motion and a second, any discussion on these minutes? I read through them earlier. I did not see anything.
I didn't see anything either.
The only one thing I saw, Dottie, was under Selectmen comments, the asterix area, though it says the status of the nineteen ninety-nine River Mill. It should be nine-two-nine River Mill. And that was the only thing, so just a small typo. Yeah, and that was all I found. So all in favor of approving the minutes with that small correction, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Right. Correspondents, we received a nice thank you card from Aiden Zimmer. He was the recipient of this year's Town of Thompson Scholarship. And then I also, we received yesterday. We received from Troop D the calls for June, the month of June, there was one hundred eighty-two calls of service in the town of Thompson. Accidents were ten, investigations were fourteen, burglaries one, larcenies one, non-reportable matters were one hundred and fifty-six. There were no DUIs, thankfully. Traffic citations were twelve and written warnings were twenty-one, and that was from Lieutenant Cody. Any other correspondence to bring to before the board this evening?
I do not have anything.
All right. I agree. I don't either, so we will move on to Agenda Item Five, Selectmen Comments. Any Selectmen comments at this time?
I honestly don't have anything prepared. I was on vacation last week, and so I, I don't have any.
Go ahead, flaunt it. And you were on vacation.
In the rain, tenting.
It was raining here, too.
In a tent.
Just two quick things. Uh, I understand we do have somebody helping Terry out upstairs.
Yes.
Doing field inspections?
Yes.
Just, uh, I don't know, make sure that he's covered in case something happens on the job site, because normally if we get Woodstock, Putnam, or somebody, they're covered by their towns, so, and the gentleman that's doing it is mentally helping out and et cetera, so it's a a good fit and everything, just for that liability.
Right, and he went through for his exam today.
Oh, he did do it, because I know he was finishing up the courses, so which is great. Uh, the other, the only other thing I got is, uh, at the last concert, somebody did approach me, and I can't remember the name of the person that lives over by Blaine Road. We know we got the building fence that's down. And I can't remember the last time we seen Sean.
Right.
I don't even know if he's even in the area. Uh, but they did express some concerns about, I guess, right at the bridge where the, uh, the canal went over and so forth, that that's wide open, that somebody.
Yeah, we've discussed doing guardrails.
If, yeah, if we can do something even temporary till we get that, uh, done over there.
All right, happy.
Because we do get foot traffic through there.
No, happy, happy to, uh, look into that, for sure.
And it's great that we got Joey tonight as well.
Any other?
Bring enough, think, Joe? You bring enough, think?
I can borrow one of your pens.
I got brand new right away.
All right, the only thing I have to share with the public tonight is just tomorrow night is the presentation with developer John Gumper. Um, members of the EPA, um, Deep will be represented, as well as, um, some of our state reps have been invited as well. Um, this will be giving the town an update on the status of the mill renovation, particularly the brownfield cleanup, um, which, if everybody recalls, we had received a two million dollar grant for that cleanup, so it's really just a time to touch base, see where we're going, where this, where this will take us, what will be developed in the mill. Um, I'm excited because it's really going to become, at some point, it's going to be a few years away before it's fully realized, but it really will be the centerpiece for town. Um, and, and, uh, yeah. So come to the meeting tomorrow night at the Library Community Center at six thirty P M. Um, so additionally, somehow I had left off, um, an agenda item, which is why Joe is here. Um, but I didn't, he's been preparing for it, he's been preparing to present to the Board of Selectmen, so I didn't want to not make it added. So could we add to other business, um, report from the Public Works Director?
How long you want to stick around, Joe?
Can we move it to?
When you write up the citizen's comments?
Yep, I'm glad you guys are.
That way, Joe.
So it would be.
No, so that way Joe can go.
Yep.
Get ready for the next thing.
All right, so how about a motion?
I'll make, I'll make that motion.
Okay, so Suzanne makes a motion. Suzanne makes a motion, ten seconds that we add Public Works Director report after citizen comments, so it would fall into Agenda Item Seven. Okay, any discussion? All in favor of, um, adding this to the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Right. All right, any other Selectmen comments? Just making sure, one once, twice. All right, I will open up the floor to citizen comments and happy to start with the virtual audience at this time. Any citizen comments? Please unmute yourself and state your name and address. Ms. Valerie Clark. Oh, I forgot to say, Valerie, I'm sorry. We had received the correspondence Marie sent to both of you. Okay, all right. Your correspondence, Valerie, was sent to both Selectmen today. Um, I think that's where you might be going, so I apologize to everybody. We did receive correspondence from Valerie Clark yesterday, or I think it was Sunday night, um, through, through email, so.
Did that get printed?
I can print it off for you.
No, I don't. I, I read it off my phone.
Sorry, Valerie, go ahead.
Okay, thanks. Valerie Clark, one oh five Elm Road. Um, I have four fairly quick items, and then I do want to talk about the letter. Uh, one is my repeated request that the calendar be brought up to date. The Conservation Commission did not meet this week. It, it doesn't have anything posted about that. And then my request again is regarding meeting conflicts, because my understanding is that the Conservation Commission is now meeting on the same night as the Planning and Zoning Commission regular meeting, so that forces citizens to make a choice, including the folks that serve on that commission. Um, the next item is regarding the agenda for tonight, uh, two, two items, actually. I see there's a cat ordinance proposal. I am absolutely opposed to any ordinance regarding spaying and neutering cats. Next is, I noticed the multi-use trails request. Um, and I'm wondering if, when that item comes up, if we could be provided with a map of what trails are being used in town. And then what you've all been waiting for is the letter. Um, I wrote a letter Sunday night because, um, of an incident that happened on Wednesday, July twelfth. And I'll read the letter. I apologize. It's, it's a little long. I'll go quickly. Hopefully, it is upsetting enough and, and, uh, interesting enough to keep your attention. On Wednesday, July twenty-third, I observed a pickup truck driving slowly up and down Elm Road and became concerned about the suspicious driving pattern on a back road in Thompson. It was a green truck with equipment in the back that looked like a tank and some hoses. I had finished the work I was doing, and so the timing on the truck's next pass coincided with my need to drive down Elm Road myself. As I followed the truck, I observed it stopping beside the gates to my hayfields, which is a behavior over the years I've come to recognize as poachers scoping out deer herds so they can illegally hunt them at night on private property. My property is posted with no trespassing, no hunting signs. However, this fact is unimportant to deer poachers. The truck continued down Elm Road to Baker Road intersection. The truck failed to stop at the stop sign and use no turn signals to indicate they were returning right. Yet another sign of suspicious behavior and disregard for the law. The truck sped up Baker Road toward Brandy Hill Road, and I decided to continue onto Baker Road to see if I could get a license plate to report the suspicious and illegal behavior to police. By the time I got to just before sixty Baker Road, I observed the truck had pulled over to the far right side of the road, stopped on a blind hill just past sixty Baker Road. Concerned about what they were doing, as well as being unable to pass them due to them blocking the road on a blind spot, I stopped my car just before the driveway at sixty Baker Road. We were likely the length of the house at that address apart. The weather lately has been quite warm, so I had my car windows and my sunroof open. A minute or so after I stopped my car, all of a sudden, with no warning, a spray began shooting out of the side of the truck onto the plants on the side of the road. Realizing this truck was probably dumping chemicals, I hurried to turn around on the road to get away and also to go home to report what I'd witnessed. At that time, the mist from the chemicals wafted into my car, and I breathed in a good amount of the mist before I realized that the mist had entered my car. I felt ill for the remainder of the day, coughing due to my lungs developing a mucus response to the chemicals and having a very bad taste in my mouth that no type of liquid or food was able to clear. Washing my face, hands, and showering did not result the issue either. Upon returning home, I called the Highway, Thompson Highway Department and learned from Kelly Janest, Public Works Aid, that the Highway Department had contracted to have the roadside sprayed in town anywhere there were guardrails. Kelly said she believed they were also spraying poison ivy. I was given the telephone number for a man named Brent at M and J Vegetation. I spoke with Brent, who told me his company was spraying gly- glyphosate. He confirmed the brand name is Roundup. And that they were spraying, quote, fences, unquote, and also for Japanese knotweed. He said I could call the town and request my properties not be sprayed, which I subsequently did, although it was too late for Baker Road, and I have since learned that it was too late for Elm Road also. I was told that East Thompson Road would not be done. However, I see there is vegetation die-off from chemical treatment on the frontage I own on East Thompson Road, so my request was not honored by M and J. As my coughing was not abating, I began to become concerned about the exposure I had received from this chemical. As an aside, I'm quite sure with all the television publicity, folks are well aware that Roundup is a carcinogen. This fact isn't pertinent to my lungs being affected by the mist that was sprayed while I was behind M and J's truck. The labeling, as well as Poison Control Center guidance for Roundup clearly states any skin contact is dangerous and the product should not be inhaled. Due to my concern for the issues I was having with breathing, I called Brent again later in the afternoon to explain the situation with having breathed in the spray and ask what the recommended treatment is for this exposure. At that time, Brent accused me of lying and stated he would never turn on the spray with a car behind him, therefore this couldn't have happened to me. I explained I was merely asking what the treatment recommendation for this exposure was, and his response was to use water. Having the experience of the poor conversation with Brent, I checked the CDC and Poison Control Center recommendations, which stated that symptoms should recede within about six hours, and if they did not, a visit to the emergency room would be in order. Washing and drinking water are indeed the first aid recommendations, which were already done and in process. In addition to the known health hazards of Roundup, it is also an indiscriminate herbicide which kills all plants and is hazardous to wildlife and waterways. Today, July sixteen, which was Sunday, I see that the herbicide was heavily applied at the bridges over the rivers on East Thompson Road by the Speedway, as well as on Baker Road just before the road turns to gravel. This means the spray directly entered the waterways, which I feel is an irresponsible application of this chemical. I am requesting that the town of Thompson evaluate the necessity of using an environmentally hazardous chemical, Roundup, on its roadways. In the past, the town judiciously cut the vegetation on the roadsides, which worked well. I believe it would be in the best interest of the town, both environmentally as well as financially and in protection of the health of its citizens, to return to the practice of cutting vegetation and discontinue the use of chemicals for vegetation management. As well, in my first phone conversation with Brent from M and J Vegetation, he explained that the reason they drive erratically up and down the roads is they are not given specific maps of where to treat, but told to go, just go find the spots themselves. This seems to be an extremely inefficient use of resources when I think the town would already have knowledge of where its guardrails are located along its ninety-six plus miles of roadway. Additionally, using Roundup to treat Japanese knotweed is not a one-time treatment. Several treatments are required at various stages of the plant's development, thus further expense and further application of dangerous chemicals. I also request that the town discontinue the use of Roundup for managing vegetative growth on any part of its roadsides, including for poison ivy. Beyond this request, I also recommend the town require any contractor who is spraying any chemical along its roadsides display signage on the front and back of the vehicle indicating that spraying is happening and what chemical is being used. Last, the citizens of Thompson should have been notified well in advance of the application of Roundup and instructions on their right to opt out of having their frontages, frontages treated. This could have easily been done as a part of, or in similar fashion to, the notifications made about roadwork being done throughout the town. Please ensure transparency and show respect to the citizens by providing notice of the use of hazardous chemicals which risk the resident's health and the environment in which they live. I look forward to seeing a policy implemented for the town of Thompson in which the use of Roundup is discontinued.
Thank you, Ms. Clark, and, um, yes, um, I've been in discussions with Joe from Public Works and with Marla Butts, our Wetlands agent, and, um, we will be looking into creating a policy.
Thank you.
Keep you apprised to that.
Thank you.
Any other citizen comments at this time? Citizen comments from the virtual audience? Feel free to unmute, state your name and address. Okay, I'm not seeing any, so we will move to the live audience. Any citizen comments at this time? Any citizens have a comment at this time? Okay. Hearing and seeing none, we will move on to the next agenda item, which is, um, report from our Public Works Director, Go Tasek.
How you doing? I'd like to give an update on what's happening around town, the constructions and things like that, and how we are progressing with our road work, uh, with subcontracting road work. We have, the subcontractors have completed all Route twelve, Plum Road and Park Road on subcontract level. Now we have to go in and do our fine tuning and planting grass and, uh, fixing some of the areas as in aprons, and we have to watch the waterways since we did change the road, which waterways will be changing, which we don't get it right the first time. We go back and make sure it's, it's done properly and try to keep the water off the road and off the residence property at the same time to get it to go into the proper areas. Um, a lot of apron and curbing will be needed at various locations for all the projects. Uh, Fabian Road has, and also today, they finished reclaiming Norman Road and Fabian Road, uh, which, uh, the schedule from the contractors is Norman Road will be completely done regrading and will be paved, uh, base coat and top coat next week. Fabian Road will have the binder coat put down on it, and hopefully by the middle of the first week of August, the final coat will be put on. And then in turn, we have to do our apron to watch our waterways and things like that. And once that is complete, from the roads that go to oil and stone, which that's a little bit slow picking up that stone because of these other projects going on, but it is progressing. We have a couple more roads to pick up. And then we're going to do some line striping on the roads. It did get oil and stoned and did get paved and make sure our, uh, speed limit signs are definitely visible because every time you pave a road, it turns into a superhighway. Uh, the chip seal itself worked out quite well. I am, I'm pretty pleased with it, not a hundred and ten percent on the, the route that I took. I may change it a little bit on whatever road, if any road gets done next year. Uh, the, the process of the stone that we put down seems a little bit rough, but it is very durable and it, and its lifespan is a lot better than a chip seal to a stone that we did put down. Um, I am going to be, uh, looking into some crack sealing on a lot of roads before the fall season kicks in to get those roads sealed up so we don't have the water freezing underneath it, destroying some of our roads. Um, I'd also like to bring in that, uh, on the thirty-first of this month, I have a, a summary or a report to do on the private roads for our winter maintenance, which I've gone through, the private roads that we have taken care of uh, around Schoolhouse Pond and things like that, which they do need some extensive work. And that is something that's going to have to be discussed on how they get maintained and brought up to proper standards for us to take our equipment down them, pothole erosion. There's many of issues on, on different types of roads. Um, I'm hoping that the Selectmen and myself will be able to get together and we'll be able to come up with something. Uh, that doesn't mean that it was the private road policy which was put its effect in two thousand and eleven, I believe. Those, those roads will still get taken care of, four inches and above, and it doesn't matter. My opinion is it doesn't matter what condition the roads are in, and if emergency does happen, the roads will be clean no matter what. That is, that is not the issue. It's just our regular maintenance for winter snow removal and so on and so forth. Um, that's about all I have right now.
Any questions?
Yeah, I do. I had a couple. Now I gotta think of what I was thinking. Oh, uh, one of the things, uh, maybe, uh, you could barnstorm on this, Joe. We have a couple of the speed limit signs with the radars on them. You know, aquatic, uh, road.
Water, bro, and one on.
Fabian. They've been there so long now that people are immune to them.
The thing with those is we found out after they were installed that those have to be registered through the state, and we have to get a permit through the state to move those around because they keep track of that stuff.
Wow, that's interesting. They came for free from the states.
Right, I knew that.
No, which is, which is great.
Right.
Yeah, which, um, putting them in different places, we could start a program to where we could leave them there for six months at a time or say a year of, of full driving season, and we can move them in various spots or locations that we have complaints from residents with speeding. We could put it there. We, we can move them wherever. I just have to look into this registration thing that we didn't really know about.
Right.
And I, and I think it had something to do with GPS.
Well, I mean, I, I wouldn't move them every other day, but I mean, if we, like you said, every six months, every, uh, every quarter, something like that.
Yeah.
Uh, then they could make their adjustment and, and that way it keeps.
Pick certain key areas or certain seasonal locations, not to pick on any business or anything, but where there is a lot of traffic or say around the parks where we know in the summertime where the children are going to be, that would be a good place to put things like that.
And, and we're going to see a lot of speed picking up, especially with the roads being redone. Like you said, it becomes speedways.
Exactly. I, I, once those roads are complete and we are, we are completed with our end of them with apron and curbing and everything like that, I do want to update the signs, which I have the paperwork from you from years ago, for speed limit signs are judged on line of sight. And, uh, and I know signs are signs, but we should get up to par on a lot of that stuff. They heard it's expensive, and every time I do.
Excuse me, sorry, Joe. He's giving a report right now.
Okay.
Please, if you could just let him speak. Thank you.
Um, I'd like to, when we do do a road, oil and stone, whether it be oil and stone, crack seal or repave, that, uh, we should update the signs if needed. Change them, at least update them for their reflective ability and visibility. What was the other one you brought up?
Oh, I was going to go back to the Roundup. Where are we on that roadside spraying?
Uh, East Thompson's done from the highway over, from the highway over, and he was told to do guard railings, which I wasn't present in town at the time, and he was given a map. And, uh, because of, it, it's easy to mow the sides of the road. We can't mow under the guard railings, and I don't expect my crew to go out there with weed whackers and poison ivy and vines to take care of that. And we've always done around all the utility poles with the program we have with the tractor. It was given from, uh, the utility companies to the three towns.
Oh, yeah.
It was our responsibility to clear spray around all the utility poles for them. That was.
Or underneath our lines.
Underneath the power lines. And also when we mow.
Vegetation.
All underneath the power lines, even though they may be on top of somebody's wall. We have to keep that down low. That was part of that program, which I think is a good standard, especially when wintertime and hurricane season coming up here in another, less than a month, to keep that stuff cleared and opened up. And as you can see, if you go like anywhere in West Thompson, Ravenell Road over by the dam, you'll notice we're losing our road to poison ivy and vine. And that was the whole idea of spraying the councoats on there, which I, I don't, I'm not picking on anybody, whether it be the gentleman that, that I hired to apply or anybody that got offended by it. He is licensed, insured, he is a professional. He works for the town of Woodstock, the town of Wellington, and I think he did some work in Putnam also. And we did do the research, which wouldn't be a bad idea to notify residents, but we did do the research. Kelly did some research for me. The state does not notify when they are going to do that. And it is our property we are spraying on the edges of the road. Either way, I just wanted to put that out. Either way, we can deal with it. If we can't use it, we'll make do with what we have and clean it the best we can. But the poison ivy and the things that are going to grow underneath the fence.
Is, uh, I know that, uh, P and W does notify us when they're.
They don't, they notice, notifies the Board of Select.
Yeah, and then we usually put it up on.
But we don't get specific dates.
No, just that they're coming through, that the people are aware.
Yeah.
That could be something we could look into in the future that we.
I know the state, the state was just, the state was just in town doing some.
Yeah, they do all their guardrails.
Spray as well.
Guardrails and both sides.
Is there an alternative product that can be used, Joe?
When I discussed it with him, he can reduce the percentages used on mixing, and he also puts an additive in the water, which he does. It basically thickens the water, so I don't know where the mist came from. It is a drop spray. It's a spot spray. And I'm not saying it didn't happen. It could happen. Obviously, anything can happen. Um, and that is a direct spray to the edge of the road. It is not an aerial spray. And, um, like Valerie Clark said, that we, it's like knotweed. You use Roundup on knotweed, but it's not a one-shot deal. For all the, all the grass that grows and different things, poison ivy is a one-shot deal. Knotweed is, is a year-plus process to destroy that plant, and it has to be hit at key times, like in the spring, now, and then in the fall. In the fall, it retract back to the ground into the roots, and it takes that with it to destroy the roots. And you can dig that up all day long, and it's going to come back up again because it is a root system like strawberry will creep right across your lawn. Poison ivy, everybody knows that. Um, we can probably do some more research and find out specific chemical systems for specific plants and maybe look into that and tail a lot more. Um, the poison ivy, I mean, the, the edges of the road by the water, it was not directly shot into the water. It was shot at the roadside. So, and I mean, that's something that we will definitely have to investigate, look into, and see what happened and, and why that happened.
Yeah, if you could look into to see what an alternative may be. I mean, the roadside mowing takes care of it.
Uh, we can't mow underneath the guardrail.
No, as, as a matter of fact, as much as I hate to say it, and I never thought I would see this, but I've seen the state out there with weed whackers going underneath the.
Some of the guardrails.
Some of the guardrails, and I.
And, and definitely.
Very surprised.
Absolutely. That's something we're going to have to address and some things we may have to do. I hate to send the guys out on all the guardrails with weed whackers behalf of the.
They ain't going to get any road work done.
Yeah, exactly, exactly. Yeah, exactly, exactly. And this season has been an outstanding growing season. And you you mow, you can mow your lawn every week if you want this summer. So it's it's something we will have to look into, and with my budget, I can. Possibly look into making that part of the program. Where individuals, that is their job. To uh, watch key areas around watershed areas, wetland areas, to where. We take care of that with weed whackers, and it has to be done manually and by hand.
And let's, let's not forget, so we're placing another demand on this department, and yet his summer help budget got cut in half.
Right.
So, right.
I get it.
Yeah, I just like, I'd like to reiterate that for the public. Um, it's important to know that when these cuts are made, it impacts his ability to do a certain job, to send crews out there. When he can't hire summer help. So this is the most efficient means for him to get that job done. And it's utilized by the state, it's utilized by. The town of Woodstock, the town of Putnam, the same vendor. Um, still something we can look into a policy for, absolutely. Um, and to make sure that we're maybe proactive in announcing and letting the public know. Um, but he is, Joe is faced with challenges when a department is continually cut.
And I can also, it will take some time to make key maps of the certain areas.
Mm-hmm.
Where it can be done and where it can't be done.
Right. Right.
So.
Something we could maybe do.
Hire a vendor, or we do go out and do it ourselves. That, which we use a roundup material. Uh, that is, is the same exact thing that you would buy a tractor supply. To do around the uh, the utility poles and things like that, but then there will be areas that. We can't do around utility poles and will have to be manually taken care of.
So, but we'll definitely look into a policy for that. Any other questions for Joe? Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
All right, um, RFP, oh my god, I forgot the bids in my office. Not gonna go, the next thing I'm gonna do is, um, so when you're walking, you'll see along the chair, there's a stack, the chair next to the right. I have the bid opening. Sorry about that.
The next, the next one.
The next, oh, I know, but the one after that was the bids, so.
Open the bids, yeah.
Okay, so agenda item eight now is um, RFP sixty-five Main Street Roof Bid Award. As you recall, we had only received one bid. It was reviewed by the committee um, that's overseeing this project. Says this correspondence is to formally recommend. Um, award of the contract for the roof replacement at sixty-five Main Street to Young Developers LLC. For a negotiated contract price of forty-three thousand nine hundred dollars. The project is funded through a grant award from the US Small Business Administration. Um, so, yeah.
I'll make the motion that we accept the recommendation of the. The committee to award it. As requested.
And I will second that recommendation. Any discussion? Um, I do wanna say that Young Developers is the same contractor that was working at the library. Um, they did a phenomenal job there, the, and Allison has nothing but good things to say about the work they did and their timeliness. Um, and I think they just have some uh. Some uh, this is some small work that's left to do to complete that project and uh, yeah. So I just wanted to share that about that, that contractor. Um. There's no further discussion. All in favor of approving the recommendation to award the contract for roof replacement to Young Developers, say aye.
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 Aye. All right, sixty-five Main Street Abatement and Selective Demolition, opening bids tonight. Um, this is just going to be opening bids um, without. Reading off the amounts. We're just gonna name the actual company and the address for the company. Um, there's five bids total that came in. I have one here. It's from Acme Contractors Incorporated. Seven Beaches Lane, Suite B, Woodstock, Connecticut. Suzanne, what is this? A Vets Demo LLC out of Vernon, Connecticut. And what was yours?
Levvy Enterprises Inc. Out of Berlin, Connecticut.
And this one is, I haven't opened it yet, Best Tech Environmental Services out of Ellington, Connecticut. Do you want it, or you want me to?
Uh, New England Yankee Construction out of West Haven, Connecticut.
Daddy, did you get the names of all of the? The uh, bidders? You need us to repeat any of them?
I could not catch the second one, started with a letter A.
I think it was A. Well, that was a Vets, V E T S Demo. LLC. So.
Out of Vernon.
Oh, it's ace, oh, so like. A vets demo, meaning like a veterans demo? I think that's what it might be. So it's A space, V E T S Demo LLC. So.
Thank you. And the fourth one was best something.
Oh, that was my. Best. Tech, or best tech, so it's B E S. T E C H. Ellington, Connecticut.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, so these bids will be forwarded over for review with the committee. Overseeing the project and uh, we'll get a full report from them on. You know, the qualified bidders. All right, agenda item nine. Oh, actually, it's. Agenda item ten. Road use RhymaCon Relay Run. Occurring Saturday, August twenty-six, twenty twenty-three. Um, and I know Ms. Park had asked. Um, the RhymaCon relay runs through Rhode Island, Connecticut and Massachusetts. Um, as far as trails, it only runs on the airline trail. Um, and then it spends most of the other time on road. Let me just, let me just look through this. East Hampton Road, Sandam Road, Lowell Davis Road, Sunset Hill Road, Thompson Road. To the probably some trails connecting and between us. Exit Trail and turn left onto Riverside Road. Then School Street in Putnam, Providence Street in Putnam, Kennedy Drive. Entering the Putnam River Trail. Continuing across, across Bridge Street, Rotary Park and Exchange Zone number six. Oh, and then there's more, okay. Southwest Main Street, back onto East Thompson Road. One ninety-three Route two hundred. And then I'm finishing on Kennedy Drive. So. But I'm happy to share that map with you, Valerie, if you wanted to see.
I get this. This looks like it's running straight down the airline trail.
Yeah, I think so. I think it is.
It just happens to go across.
Across the.
Lowell Davis Sunset for fifty feet, whatever the width of the road is.
Yeah.
And then it dumps on to uh, where the trail ends.
But it does get to Putnam. You can't get to Putnam on the airline trail.
No, but it ends where we end in Mechanicsville.
But it ends on Kennedy Drive.
Correct, but in Thompson, it ends at Route twelve and then continues down Route twelve. To get into.
The maps, the maps are available. I can certainly. Share it. So, this is, I haven't looked at it that closely.
Yeah, I just quickly.
A couple of years and it's always a successful event. So it's saying Douglas State Forests to Rotary Park. So.
That needs to go in that last packet.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I did not realize you still got that part of it. I thought you were pointing, I thought you had that map. I would not have taken that away. Just because Valerie asked for it, I have a second. Description that I can send to you as well. So. All right, so with that. Um, is there a motion to approve the request for road, road use for the RhymaCon Relay Run?
I'm moved. I'll make the motion.
Okay, Suzanne has the motion, Ken has the second. Any further discussion? All in favor of approving the road use for the RhymaCon Relay Run, say aye.
Aye.
Right, and they did, you saw they had the entry, yes, and I'd say aye, so that motion passes. All right, reappointments, Agricultural Commission, um, within a term to expire August first, twenty twenty-eight. I make a motion that we reappoint Valerie Clark, Jonathan Eddy and Daniel Kelly. To the Agricultural Commission of the Town of Thompson, term to expire August first, twenty twenty-eight.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion on these reappointments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And that motion passes. All right, next agenda item is twelve, smoking and vaping policy. In the past, there had been a smoking policy, um, quite a few years ago, I believe. Um, but now we have to deal with vaping, we have to deal with um. Cannabis use and the potential of that. Um, our Human Resources Director, Michelle DiMarinaro, um, created this, this draft for us to review tonight. Um. I think it's important for the safety and health of our employees and the people that visit town hall. Um. But Michelle, is there anything you wanna share about the policy?
Hello, um, this is just an update based on the uh, Responsible and Equitable Regulation of Adult Use Cannabis Law. That went into effect back on October first, twenty twenty-one. Um, you know, we've had some feedback in the town hall that there, we needed to update this policy, um, because. Things have changed so rapidly in the last five years. Um, so this is just an encumbersome policy that covers everything from. Like Amy said, the smoking, the cannabis, the vaping, um, and it just updates. Um, in our buildings and our vehicles and our equipment, um, and it affects all of our town hall employees, all our visitors, customers and vendors. Contractors, consultants, uh, temporary employees or student interns, it's just a little bit more um. Details, and it does also state that um, smoking vaping is not permitted within twenty-five feet of any doorway on town premises.
Michelle, is this the uh, what is the school done for their uh, policy?
Um, I, the school policy's been in effect for a very long time. It is against, I I think, federal law. I'm pretty sure that you can smoke anywhere on a pro, on a school property, so this is just updating us. Um, obviously, there's no vaping. We all know that there's a vaping problem across the country with um, kids nowadays, but. You know, we are following the same policies pretty much. But with schools, you cannot smoke anywhere near their property at all. Um, I will tell you that I drive by Mopfre, um, Insurance, the big headquarters off of Joe Jenny Road. Um, every morning, and I do see their employees actually having to walk to the town um, public sidewalk. To um, smoke or vape.
Any other questions from Michelle or myself? I think this is a a valid policy that needs to be in place to make it clear. Um, we have had some concerns raised um, about certain staff people vaping in their offices. And certain staff people smoking in town vehicles. So um, this is what kind of alerted us to the fact that. Um, this was a policy that we should have in place and make clear that it is, it should not be in public buildings. In fact, I think it's a state law too, Michelle. That there's not supposed to be vaping or smoking within municipal buildings.
It is.
Yeah.
Absolutely a state law, but this is just, you know, really updating our policy to ensure that. Um, we are in compliance and it also has a sign-off for our employees as well. So that they understand the policy. Um, this policy will be signed off by every person that works for us currently. And going forward um, in a hiring packet.
No, we did have a smoking policy, so this does update it.
Do, do we have a copy of the old one? I don't know where the old one is. Michelle, do you know where the old copy is?
I have it, but I don't have it here. Um, it is, actually, I believe it's in the town hall in my, my old policy book.
Oh, really?
Yes, I can email it to you guys.
Yeah, I just wanted to see the can, the changes that had been made and how it was. Written before.
Mm-hmm.
I'm not questioning, I'm not questioning um, the need for it. I just wanted to see the changes and.
It was a very small policy.
That it was.
So any, any thoughts? You like to wait to make a decision until.
I don't remember what the old policy was. Uh, I mean, I vaguely remember, but not hundred percent. It's only gonna be a couple of weeks for our next meeting, August. And, you know, we can address it there.
All right, sounds good. We will get you that information then.
I'll email it to you tomorrow. I'm back in the town hall tomorrow morning.
Thanks, Michelle.
You're welcome.
All right, next agenda item, agenda item thirteen, cat and spay neuter ord- ordinance. Send you guys just a sample of what I found. Um, it is from the town of Mansfield. Obviously, our new um. Uh, Animal Control Officer came from the town of Mansfield. Um, after a week of being here, a week and a half of being here, she's, we sat down together, we've been meeting regularly. I will say she's doing a fantastic job. Um, but we're meeting regularly, and she says, Amy, I wouldn't have thought, we have a serious problem in Thompson. There is a feral cat problem in Thompson. Um. From people feeding the feral cats, um, and then just they multiply. And without an actual trap neuter and release program, or trap neuter and return program, um. This would kind of encompass leading to that program becoming effective.
Well, NECOG did have a trap neuter and release program. That they had gotten funds for several years ago, and I'm sure they've expended all of those uh.
I can remember meeting with Faye from Paw's Cat Shelter and um, it's there, they have not. They have not been refund, re-refunded possibly, but.
No, but I remember NECOG had gotten money to do and try and reduce the amount of feral cats.
So, um, Erin currently had two feral cats in the, in the shelter that. She's. Brought to a facility to get spayed and neutered. So um, it it is a mission. She does see it as a problem, a very big problem.
Feral cats not owned by anyone.
Correct, but.
How is this going to address?
How this addresses it is, once you start feeding a cat, by by law, you take ownership of that cat. So.
So now we're gonna have feral hungry cats. I I I don't know. I'd like to have a little more research. I'd like to hear some opinions. Yeah, and I, and I'm not sure, I'm not sure, I'm totally on board with this, so somebody has to, yeah.
And that's perfectly fine. It was just a concern that she brought up to me. She said that Mansfield had one and I wanted to bring it to the board for consideration. I'm not pro or against it. I just think it's something that we could consider to potentially aid. In the issue. Um, talked to Faye from, from Paw's Cat Shelter, and most towns do not take responsibility. And cats, they, they are property when they're owned by somebody, and they are allowed to roam when they're feral. But but it's becoming a large, a larger problem than maybe we know.
But even your household cat, you have indoor household cats that never go out, and you have. I've had cats, they run it out all day and so forth, so if if you're responsible.
If the board decides that it's not something, you want it pursued, then that's fine.
I see a lot, I see a lot of questions on this one.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
For an ordinance.
If it was anything I thought, I thought maybe the ordinance review board could look into it, but I'll let you guys sit on it and think about it.
If anything, I'd rather to see us pursue some sort of funding to uh trap and relieve, trap neuter or.
But we don't have one animal control officer.
But you know what, we do, don't we have a shelter, we have a uh, something on one ninety-three?
No, we don't, that's been.
Yeah, it's, it's closed.
Yeah. I, it's one, we have one animal control officer and statutorily she has to investigate and ta- pick up feral cats. So it's going, I'm just saying it's going to be a burden on the program. So yes, if we could find money, but then it's still only one individual, I think as a community. Remember Bob Barker, but as a community, we all should be taking the responsibility for the animals that are around us, we all should. So if, if I had a cat near me and I had the opportunity to catch it and have a heart trap and or clean spade or neuter, I won.
Let's open up your neighbors, yeah.
I mean, any cats near me, I don't.
And, and feral cats were a problem in general.
Yeah.
Uh, the, it's, it's extremely difficult to domesticate them.
Mm-hmm, no, you don't.
Oh, no.
People do try them.
The two that, the two that Erin has at the shelter right now, um, that just came back from their surgeries today. Um, she's putting a post out to hopefully find somebody that needs barn cats.
Barn cats, and that's, and that's a problem too, people will drop cats off at a barn.
Yeah.
Just like, oh, yeah.
Yeah, the abandoned animals.
Exactly.
Right. Um, but just again, just from some food for thought, I'm neither for nor against, it just was brought up to me by Erin. She had extreme concern that this was going to be a large load um on, on the program, um, but we can just put it to the side and maybe revisit it after Erin's been here for a while and we get a better.
But you have.
And she has a better understanding of, right. And we'll have, she's also set up, just to let you know about the work that she's done, she's set up a system for recording all of her calls. She's going to be able to give very detailed reports to our Board of Finance because we know they were looking for those kind of reports. I know Bill Stegglitz is thrilled with the work that she's doing and, and uh her abilities so far and um, yeah.
But it's come up in the conversation with Board of Selectmen as well.
Yeah, so.
So I'm happy to do that.
She'll be reporting to us and.
Oh, I would love to have that, yeah. I would love to have her come in.
After a month or two and she's.
Every, every six months or something, or you know, when she's really in the, in the role and, and been there for a while, I would love that.
Yeah, excellent. All right, so that was that. Any other business to bring before the board tonight?
Other business, nothing. Ken?
Nothing.
Okay. Um, citizen comments, at this time, we will start with the live audience, any citizen comments from the live audience? Not quite tonight. Okay, virtual audience, any? Brian LaFredo.
Hi, I just wanted to go back to the uh roadside spraying, uh, it was discussed earlier. I have no problem with the spraying being done, if you, as you might know, on Lowell Davis, on the skinny part of the road, we have that knot weed that basically takes over the road and uh TPW is always trying to cut it back and spray it. I noticed that it was sprayed, or I assumed something happened because the leaves were all turning brown. My only request is if we do that, that the public is informed what roads are gonna be done, because I walk my dog every day. And my dog always goes to sniff uh the side of the road, even if I try to pull him away, if a car comes, we have to go to the side of the road. And I would hate to have him be licking or affected by uh chemical like round up.
Thoroughly noted, thank you, thank you, Mr. LaFredo.
You're welcome.
They are drawn to the polls, the.
Yeah.
Mark the territories.
Ms. Clark, Valerie Clark.
Sorry, it's taken me a second. Yep, just a few follow-ups, um, on the roundup, I agree with Mr. LaFredo. Uh, that was one of the issues, when I found out that there was roundup being sprayed, I notified the folks that walk their dogs because that it's a very big concern and they would not have known that the road had just been treated. Um, there's uh some question about how I could possibly have had the mist wafted into my car. And the thing is, is that this truck was parked uphill from me. Those hoses are at the top of the truck and they spray voluminous amounts, it's not like it's concentrated in one spot, it's a big, wide and long spray. And he was uphill and well above me and I had my sunroof open, so it sprayed down. It was drawn down to where I was, um, as well as there was a wind. Um, and uh, I would encourage anybody who has not witnessed what this spraying looks like, to go follow the guy. It's pretty um scary to see what the application is like, because it's not in control, it's it's very much a random spray that is designed to target one specific swath, it's not like they're spraying on one plant or something like that, it's a big swath that they're hitting. Um, and as for how to maintain the guardrails in the areas that are hard to mow. I think you can also, I think there's plenty of citizens in town that have environmental concerns and you could ask for volunteers. And that would help mitigate some of, some of the work that might be involved in keeping the guardrails trimmed is if you had a volunteer force. Certainly part of the roadside cleanup, there's many of us that would help with that if we had known that that was going to be a problem. Um, on to the cat ordinance. Um, I agree with Suzanne that this is just gonna create a bigger problem than we already have. There, it will create more feral hungry cats because people will stop taking care of them because they, they can't domesticate them and they're just gonna be in trouble for having them that we're taking care of, and then it'll lead to more neglect, more abandonment. You really cannot legislate morality and that's what you're trying to do. Um, Tufts offers a spay neuter program, trap, trap spay neuter. Um, you have to do have a quantity, I believe, in order for them to do it, but they bring them up to the veterinary hospital and they use them for the students to learn on. And that's a very successful program. And then as far as I myself, I've had, I don't currently have any feral cats. However, I have had in the last ten years, a huge colony that showed up at my door, dropped kittens, and I trapped, spayed, neutered, vaccinated every single one of them and placed the elder kittens in homes. And I know many people that do do that and that once that queen, who was probably responsible for the entire colony, once she was spayed, there were no more. And now we have none here, so when people, people are able, it's an expensive prospect, but when people are able to do it, and people do, it does take care of the colonies and so I think having an ordinance would only create more work for the dog officer. Um, and last, thank you for offering me the map, I'm very interested in looking at it, I was interested to hear what trails there were, my concern had been and I don't think it was this group and I don't think I thought it was this group, but there are groups who have run trail events in town and they've scheduled them across private property without asking for permission. And that's been an issue, um, they've asked the town for permission, but not the private property owners. Um, and then thank you for the appointment, reappointment to the Agricultural Commission, uh, it's one of the original members of the Agricultural Commission, I appreciate being re- reappointed, thank you.
Great.
Thanks for volunteering.
Yeah. Thanks Valerie, and um as Bob Barker would say, thank you for spaying and neutering your pets. I'm sorry, I just had to interject that. But no, I really appreciate the fact that you've done that and that's, that's incredible and um it's, it's really, I wish everybody would behave in that manner, so thank you. Um. All right, any other citizen comments, virtual audience? Citizen comments, live audience. One last time. All right, we'll move on to tax refunds. Okay, I make a motion that we refund Robert P. Peppin nineteen dollars and seventy-six cents. C C A P Auto Lease LTD, two hundred and thirty-three dollars and forty-six cents, and Ryan M. Audet, twenty-eight dollars and thirty-seven cents. For a total of two hundred eighty-one dollars and fifty-nine cents, I make that motion.
Second.
Hey, motion in a second, any discussion on these tax refunds? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and that passes. All right, we are, we're gonna have to move into executive session, which means I will have to put the virtual audience into a waiting room. Um, it's the last item on our agenda, I don't suspect that there will be any action taken, um. But I don't know, um, so with that, I'm going to put people into the waiting room. Um, well first.
So we need a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of discussion of salary of town hall employee.
Okay, make that motion.
I did.
Second.
Okay, and we're going to bring Bill Stegglitz and Michelle Jamaranaro into, if that's okay to add that to the.
With the Board of Selectmen and.
With the Board of Selectmen, Michelle Jamaranaro, HR Director, and Bill Stegglitz, Finance Director.
Yep.
Okay, so we have a motion in a second to go into executive session at eight oh two PM. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all right, we're moving into executive session. Dottie, I will let you know if um there's any action um taken and um if you wanted to stay in the waiting room, you could stay in the waiting room. Um, entirely up to you, otherwise I will let you know.
Thank you, I probably will not wait.
Okay. Oh, I just put Michelle, no I didn't, I did.
Dottie?
No, but you're gonna.
Can I, can I, thank you very much for the mug. Yes, and, and the notebook, yeah, I, I'm a graduate of QBCC, so I really like that, I'm gonna hang on to it.
Thanks, Dottie.
You're very welcome. Hold on to your mementos.
Yes, it was very thoughtful. All right, so we've come out of executive session, it is eight thirty-one PM. Would somebody like to make that motion? And I'll just write it down.
So I'm gonna attempt to make this motion that we um, request on the Board of Finance up to fifteen thousand dollars for salary for inland wetlands and um.
Conservation.
Conservation.
That's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor of making this request of the Board of Finance, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, that motion passes. Um, I'll make a motion that we adjourn at eight thirty-two PM.
Second, third, whatever.
All right, all in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, we are adjourned, thank you.
Have a good night.
Thanks, you too.
Thanks, Michelle.
Thanks, Michelle. I don't know.